Good afternoon and welcome to the February 17, 2023 Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Greg Musial, I'm the immediate past Chair and filling in here to start the meeting because our Chair is unavailable and our Vice Chair Nancy Ingram will join us and run the meeting via Zoom once we get started. If you would help me start the meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
The republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Nancy, I might go ahead and note that we do have a quorum. We have three trustees present in the trustee chambers and we have you on Zoom so we have four members and with that I will turn it back to you Vice Chair Nancy Ingram.
You, thank you very much Mr. Musial. Would you confirm those who are in attendance by name?
Trustee Rutan, trustee Rail, trustee Musial and yourself.
Okay, thank you. I was not, I just wanted clarification, so thank you very much and I apologize that I am not there in person this evening, but it's good to see everyone. We will go ahead and begin with our awards and recognitions and with that I will turn it over to our President Dr. Andy Baughn.
All right, thank you trustee Ingram. This night we'd like to begin with our Student Spotlight and so Sharaya if you'd like to come to the podium and you and I had a great conversation last week and I look forward to you spending a few minutes with our trustees, so Sharaya.
Hello everybody, I am Sharaya Gavel. This is my fourth and last semester here at Johnson County unfortunately. I had an amazing time here and continue to have such a great time here. I'm from Lee Summit, Missouri. I was starting my senior year or all throughout high school, I was very against going to school close to home. I wanted to go far, far away as possible only because I've been here my whole life. So I wanted to experience more outside, more outside in different states, but unfortunately COVID happened and I am a soccer player and so I was recruiting and trying to go to different schools, but once COVID happened traveling was restricted and so then I couldn't go play for other schools outside and I was blessed by Johnson County. I had contact with the assistant coach and also knew the former coach for the women's soccer program and it was just, it was just the right moment and right moment in time and I love my decision. I've grown so much here each semester. I'm currently a student ambassador in the CSI Center for Student Involvement. I'm also a part of BSU, the Black Student Union and me and one of my coworkers/teammates just created a club recently called the Student Athlete Club. And with that, since working in the Center for Student Involvement, I have recognized like all the clubs and how much being involved on campus really impacts your college career here. Once you find a community that you like to be a part and that you can connect with other people, it really promotes and motivates you to do more and do well and find those study groups and find those you know hangout times and positive people to be around and also helps with networking. So yeah, so with creating the Student Athlete Club, I realized in our Student Athlete Program kind of like we know like that's the soccer girl, that's the softball girl, but I wanted to go more and beyond that for all of us athletes to get together and support each other more at our games. I feel like at our games it's a hit and miss of how many people come and I feel like that should start with us that walk past each other every day, like we should want to go support each other more. And so that's where we created this club for and help build leadership and teamwork skills and sportsmanship as well. With Black Student Union, I joined Black Student Union the second semester I was here only because the first semester we had soccer at the same time as the meetings unfortunately and so I had to go to soccer. But yes, I love working and being a part of Black Student Union. I am the Vice President there as well and I think we hold amazing events and I just love that everybody can be welcome and you can learn new things every day. And so yeah, some of the events we have coming up is like the Black Owned Business Expo and we also have the Mayors coming in to like a meet and greet kind of thing. So yeah, it's really a great opportunity for networking and just to see like what possibilities there are out there and where else you can go. But yeah, that's all I have to say.
Sharaya, let me go ahead, this is Nancy Ingram, I'm on Zoom, so I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but I have to tell you just your enthusiasm, I feel like I can see the faces of all the people at the dais who are smiling at you. So thank you very, very much for joining us this evening. I know how excited they are. I will ask if any of my fellow trustees have any questions for Sharaya.
Yes.
Melody does Nancy.
Thank you Melody, go ahead.
Sharaya, I had the opportunity to meet you just briefly before the meeting started and you are an incredibly poised and well spoken young woman, so I'll compliment you on that for sure. I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit and I'm going to ask you a question. If you had one piece of advice that you could give to incoming student athletes who are just starting in college, what would it be?
It would definitely be get involved. I think as a student athlete, I know our time, like we have very restricted time, we have a set schedule and everything, but there's so much you can do outside of what our schedule is to get more involved. Not even if you want to take on a position working here at the school. I think that's an awesome way to get involved but still be able to like make money and still be able to live life as a student athlete as our schedules are so compact. But finding that time working here was a great opportunity for me to still be able to work and still be able to connect with other students and staff here on campus.
Yeah, very well said. Where are you going from here? Where is life taking you from here?
Yeah, so I am still in my decision process. I'll be going soon on a visit to schools in Louisiana. That's where I went to go, I went to go far away so now it's time. But yeah, so I am still between two schools. I'm between Xavier University and Southern A&amp;M in Louisiana and I'll continue to play soccer as well.
Well, good luck to you, I'm sure you'll do well wherever you end up.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you Sharaya, anyone else?
Oh, it is a pleasure to hear from you. I love how you're involved all over the school and that you made lemonade out of lemons of COVID. I love also that you found at that club, it's such a great idea and you go why doesn't a club like that exist already so you can kind of have that cross support and a lot of the athletes in different sports probably have a lot of things in common or even a lot of the same concerns. What is your major, one, and then two, if you do go to Xavier, I have a really cute son there.
We're only recording, it's okay.
My major is, sorry, I forgot to say this, I am majoring in two, I'm majoring in business administration, I'm also doing a liberal arts degree. I just, at first I was just going to do business, but then with the transferring, I just wanted to be sure, so that's why I'm getting both business and liberal arts degree.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Sharaya, does anyone else have anything?
Nancy, I have a question, I just want to point out too that trustee Mark Hamel joined us early on in Sharaya's presentation, so that you know that.
Thank you.
What position do you play on soccer field, pitch?
I play outside back, but really wherever coach wants me, I'll play. I can go or stop the goal, you know? Do it all.
I confirmed with Dr. Baughn that you were one of the athletes on Tuesday night, Wednesday night, when we were here, Wednesday night that was honored with an athletic academic award. Not only did you make the 3.0, but why don't you tell everybody here and make us all feel inadequate what your GPA was?
My GPA is a 4.0, I kept it all semester.
And finally, do you have any younger siblings or other people that you could recruit to come to Johnson County Community College? I'm semi-serious, we want to get the word out and Lee Summit is a nice easy drive over here, it might be far enough away to get away from your parents, but if you can encourage people to try Johnson County Community College, that would be a great legacy.
Yes, I always, always mentioned that it's such a great opportunity. Over the summer I do a lot of camps and work with high school students and the little, little itty bitty ones, but yes, I always recommend Johnson County first for your first two years because it's just a great you know stepping stool going, continuing on and creating networks here, just in case if you want to go far away, you can always come back home and still have those same networks, so.
I don't think there are any other questions Nancy.
All right, Sharaya, thank you so much, we wish you all the best, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Baughn, back to you.
All right, and then I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. McLeod.
I wanted to step down from the dais and come so that I could stand here at the podium and deliver this next particular award. This is in recognition of great work that has been done alongside faculty by a member of our staff who's been recognized a few times over the last few years, but there has not been enough recognition. During the latest international meeting on simulation and healthcare, Timothy Loughlin, who is our resident guru in healthcare simulation, was unanimously awarded Innovator's Award for the work that he did in helping us make our way through COVID and the design that he put together to allow us to keep our students working through simulation even at a distance when we were forced on Zoom and the world came to a stop and our students were not allowed necessarily to go into the hospitals for a while to ply their trade and to finish the education that they began. Tim has been something of a revelation for us on the academic side and the work that he has done alongside the faculty over in nursing and Rochelle Quinn as his primary touchpoint in that department. They have really changed the face of simulation at this institution, not just utilizing the tools that we have in place in our virtual hospital, but in helping the students think through real world opportunities. Ideas for how to get them centered around what really happens in a hospital setting. Bringing in actors and actresses to be family members, to show that grief, to help them learn to be greater practitioners and a lot of that has been done through Tim's work in designing not just the technology, but how we use that technology. Training our nursing faculty on the use of the simulators, helping design a number of the simulation opportunities for the most real world impact. He has really changed the face of simulation at Johnson County over the last five years. It's been an honor for me to have been a part of working with him and just kind of, all I do is sign the papers, but I stay out of the way and let him be great and that has really benefited our students in some major ways over the last couple of years and it's great to see him being recognized on an international stage for the work that he's been able to do at Johnson County. Tim?
Well, thank you very much, I was not expecting all that or any of this or the awards that have come my way, so thank you very much for honoring that and for having me.
Well, thank you so much, I don't know if trustee Ingram, if any of the trustees have any comments or questions?
That was what I was going to open it up for. Tim, we're glad you're here this evening, thank you so much. Do any of my colleagues have a question for Tim? Dr. McLeod did such a nice job. Trustee Rutan, did you have something?
Repeat that.
What's the most difficult simulation to do?
Oh, that's a, that's a good question. So I would say in broadly probably a mass casualty event. We don't really do them here, I know our EMS program is working on one, but there's so many different components that go into it, almost probably a year of planning that would take place, but so many variables and so many different entities coming into it. With our students, we have just different layers of simulation that they go through, whether a first year nursing student or a second year, and the complexity of those simulations grow as they advance through the program. So I would say some of the later second year simulations are a lot more involved and a lot more difficult and a lot more cleanup.
And what led you to this career?
Oh, that's, that's a long and storied one there. I started in the sports and movie industry. Johnson County hired a simulation specialist when they started the Sim Center and my initial responsibilities were just the audio visual equipment. So that's why I'm actually hired through the Video Services Department at JCCC, but as simulation grew and as my role grew, I just got more and more training opportunities. So when, when we talk about awards or going to IMSH, I really am just honored to be able to go there on behalf of JCCC and learn and have these training experiences and so my position just kind of grew from there, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to give you a shout out, I, the kind of work that you do is so incredibly important and I can remember back when I was an instructor at the Police Academy, that was one of the most important aspects of our training, is putting our, putting our students in touch with actors in simulated situations to see if they could really do what it was that they had been trained to do. And I had no idea quite frankly that we had people coming in as actors to you know portray grieving family members and such, what an incredible thing for our students because those soft skills sometimes are the hardest to develop and the most important given the situation. So kudos to you and congratulations on your recognition.
Thank you very much. I really enjoy coming in now and seeing the Police Academy and police officers training sometimes in the morning. We see those opportunities and it's just great to see all the different specialties on campus that get that real life learning experience.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Tim, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great to recognize you, thank you. And I'll just say thank you to both Sharaya, excuse me, and Tim. I know those are highlights for everyone at every meeting, so thank you both very much. Our next order of business is the open forum. I will go ahead and read that the open forum section of the board agenda is time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak and then instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise the subject of a review by the college or the board. And I understand that this evening there are no registered speakers for the open forum, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, very good, we will move on, thank you very much. And that moves us into our board reports and the first one is from our Student Senate President Daniel Gonzalez.
Hello and good evening.
Good evening.
The report, so I have, first report I'd like to talk about is our Student Senate Spring 2023 Event. As you know, as you may have not known, last year we, for Spring 2022, we had a spring dance kind of formal. This, this year we're going to be doing a service week, it'll be the last week of March and the Student Senate will be going to volunteer around the Johnson County community. Next, I have Student Senate MidSemester Elections. We recently had one newly elected Senator Kiran Swanson. For Student Senate Funding, Student Senate this month has granted funding for three different clubs. We have the Graphic Design Club for their end of year event, the Student Nursing Association and the Model UN for their New York trip. For our new clubs, as you heard in our Student Spotlight, the Student Athlete Club was recently created as a new club. And lastly, I'd like to go over our Clear and Connect Liaison. I don't know if you guys had recently seen, through the campus ledger, there was an article about, from our Vice President Maria and our Clear and Connect Liaison Hank Wolf. It's been a great opportunity to have him within, within our Student Senate and he's been able to inform us on various different events that that Clear and Connect Program has, such as the Golden Scoop events that they have. That's all I have for you guys.
Daniel, thank you very much. Tell us a little bit more about the Clear and Connect Liaison, is that something new this year?
Yeah, so it is something new. So the Clear and Connect Program, they're not allowed to be senators as they don't pay credits, they don't, they don't pay for credits and so we created a new position for the Clear and Connect Program to have a liaison on the board, on the Student Senate.
Okay, very good. Does anyone else have anything for Daniel? I see trustee Smith Everett, good evening. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Daniel. Try to get through this without coughing. Excuse me. How was that person selected for the Clear and Connect position, do you know?
The way we selected our Clear and Connect Liaison was that the Clear and Connect Hank Wolf came to consecutively three meetings and we elected him as liaison for that.
Very good, thank you for that and I really appreciate the inclusivity of that. I think that's a really important component of student body that we haven't recognized well, so thank you for the Student Senate for doing that and that'll conclude my comments.
Does anyone else have anything?
Do you guys know where you're going to volunteer?
Okay, I was sorry, trustee Rutan, yes.
Do you know where you're going to go volunteer at the end of the month?
Yeah, I believe we have a couple places. I believe one of the places was we're going to go read children's books here at the nursery here.
Hurstiner.
That's one off the top of my head, I can't remember.
Hurstiner?
Yeah.
Over at Hurstiner?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, anyone else have anything? Daniel, you're also a highlight, thank you so much, it's always good to see you.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just interrupt and make sure Daniel and Sharaya both know that they don't have to stay for the entire meeting?
Well, you may, that would be great, thank you.
Don't feel bad if you walk out. You have studying to do in soccer practice right now in 14 degrees.
Drive safely, drive safely. Okay, our next person is our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you Madam Chair. We are now completing the fifth week rounding out the time just before the first turnaround period in the legislature and both the House and Senate Committees are working at a very fast pace to get bills out that can be debated on both the House and Senate floor and that's what will be occurring next week mainly. We're almost there, February 24th is the deadline for bills that started in the House to be over in the Senate and vice versa. I always talk a little bit about the receipts to the state coffers. I'm going to read that portion of the report and skip straight into the part about where we have about 30 plus bills that provide some level of tax carve out across the entire budget system and they're everything from sales tax exemptions, property tax exemptions or delays for veterans or seniors, there's multiple food sales tax bills that take the food sales tax rate to zero, there's some bills on social security income as well as flat tax proposals that vary in the rate in which they charge and those, those proposals are anywhere from a minimal amount clear on up into the billions of dollars when you look three years out. And the reason I talk about why that is so important is because we're still also looking at economic development incentive packages. We just had another Apex project announced last week for a semiconductor chip company in Wichita. It's a great project and I think the thing that frequently gets lost in the big mix is you can see the prize, but when you start calculating what's going on down the road, that's where sometimes things can, can get lost and I'll even provide an example here in a little bit. But when you have those large products, projects rather, that have an impact on the tax system down the road, it's hard to remember that when you're talking about what those carve outs look like right now when revenues are good. And so that's one of the reasons why I always keep that, that conversation top of mind. It was Budget Week for the higher education system, the community college and technical college system testified on Tuesday to their budget as well as just this morning over the noon hour and those, keep in mind the original ask on behalf of the two-year sector was about 33 million. The governor approved around $7 million in recommendations and so that's kind of where we're at is balancing what we're trying to backfill from the request versus what was recommended by the governor's office. Add to that mix a little bit of a misunderstanding or difference in numbers if you will on a gap spreadsheet, one which shows a one-year running total for community colleges and one that has a three-year rolling average and we are, we stand to lose either $666,000 when it comes to that if we're using the one-year gap spreadsheet for tiered and non-tiered courses or closer to $33,000 if we use a three-year rolling average. Everyone agreed to a three-year rolling average, the numbers that the Board of Regents produced show a one-year calculation on those totals and so that's one of those things that is going to be the sort of that tug, the give and take that goes on as we continue to negotiate the, the budget expenditures over the course of the rest of the session. I want to talk a little bit about a few high-profile bills related to community colleges and higher education. The first one is the Technical Education Authority, re-crafting what that board looks like and it's Senate Bill 48. A lot of effort has gone into this work product. Several folks sat around a table just like this a week ago to come up with what that structure should look like. I've attached that recommended structure at the very end of the report and that hit a couple of snags when everyone who indicated they were in agreement started peeling off and that, that produced a little bit of a problem this week when the Senate Education Committee was getting ready to work that bill and, and people had been talking to other legislators saying they weren't on board even though they sat around a table and, and indicated that they were. So we're working through those, those issues and I think we're getting, I think we're getting there. A couple of the institutions that maybe weren't in favor initially or started backing away have realized that there's a lot that they can benefit from the, the way that board is being re-crafted. So that particular piece of legislation is, is still in the works and I think we'll see some action probably on Monday or Tuesday in the Senate Education Committee. I want to send a shout out to Jim Lane here at the college, Dean of Arts and Design, for testifying on the film incentive bill. The college stands to benefit from a work product that is brought together by the film industry that recognizes the training that goes on in the state. We used to have a film incentive program in Kansas and it went away. We have a robust program here and a lot of those students leave the state once they, once they complete the program. If enacted, this particular program would provide incentives for folks to come and make films in Kansas and there are filmmakers in Kansas that are going to other states. There's a, there's a version both in the Senate and in the House and when I talked a little bit about earlier about the, the right hand not necessarily knowing what the left hand is doing, this is a good example. Today, when that bill was being worked in the Senate, one of the senators made a motion to remove the grant funding that would benefit programs like we have here at the college. Those grants will be, to be administered by the Department of Commerce. That money is currently out in the Senate version, there still is a House version of that bill and the House will be working that bill either Monday or Tuesday of next week. That same senator also proposed the removal of the 6.5 million in training dollars for the Panasonic project. That's something that was already signed in a, in an agreement and so that's kind of what we're dealing with in Topeka when we talk about, we've got these great projects that are moving forward, when the bills come due, sometimes we forget what that looks like. The, the other bill that received quite a bit of highlights or at least awareness certainly in Topeka is the CNA Training Hours Bill and House Bill 2049 would reduce the training from 90 to 75 hours and again, I want to thank Christina Rudesel. And again, I want to thank Christina Rudisell in our Allied Health Department for providing the technical information that we used in the system statement that Heather Morgan provided during that hearing in the House Health and Human Services Committee. That bill hasn't been worked yet, we do anticipate that there will be some action on that bill. And the association testified in a neutral capacity on that bill. And so we'll see what, what changes or amendments may be forthcoming. The final bill that I want to talk about and then I'll open it up for questions because I know that the report was lengthy, I'll let you absorb that at your own leisure and, and focus on a couple of pieces maybe that were at the end of that report. But the, the next and, and the last bill that I want to talk about is the Kansas Promise Act updates. That bill was amended to include transportation programs and education and early childhood programs. And that bill was passed out of committee and sits on general orders in the House and we're waiting for that to be worked on the House side and sent over to the Senate. The, the only things that I would probably draw your attention to were that last, that last attachment in the report, which is the Technical Education Authority matrix of what the, the newly recrafted body would look like. And then the second to the last page, which is the, the spreadsheet that talks about the community college system budget. So I think I would stop there, Madam Chair, and see if there's any questions that I'm able to answer.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Does anyone have anything for Mr. Carter at this time?
Mark.
I can see trustee, I thought it was trustee Hamel, thank you.
Yeah, the, the bill that, or looking at the Promise Act and adding in transportation and early childhood, does it, do they say when they wanted to try to get that part of the curriculum and get that part of the Promise Act in that?
So as soon as the bill is passed, it would be enacted on July 1 and those programs would be, we would be able to include those programs for the fall, for the fall session.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm not seeing or hearing anyone. Mr. Carter, could you just go back to the Promise Act? I know something that we have talked about, has, has there been any change in providing the scholarship information online by Kbor? Are you aware of that?
I know that they're not planning on posting anything until after March is the word that we-
So that has not changed?
So it has not changed.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may, may I ask Dick a question about? KACC, the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees testified neutral on the CNA bill. What is our allied health professionals' opinion about whether that is a good thing for the training of certified nurse assistants?
I'm not sure, I'm equipped to answer that. I do know that we served an important role in providing the technical information for the testimony. I'm looking over here to see if there's any help, I got a finger, is that a good finger? Okay.
Our, our faculty believe that, that while streamlining curriculum to, to aid and, and speed to degree is always a good idea, that the necessary components that would need to be stripped away are things that would cost quality in, in the nursing field and in the work that those students are capable of doing immediately upon their graduation.
And just so I'm clear, my daughter started as a CNA on her way to a pediatric practice, but 70, 75 versus 90 hours, that's total hours in the classroom?
It is total hours.
It's not semester?
No.
It's not 90 hours of, you know, eight semesters, six semesters?
Total program.
90 total hours versus 70? And I know west rural Kansas is short on, on medical personnel of all, of all stripes.
Yes.
But I, I assume we might have some questions about the trade-off between quality and speed.
Yeah, those are some of the primary issues. And if, and if you think about, you know, the, the example of, of your daughter and particularly if you're looking out at rural Kansas, a CNA in a, in a less well-populated area is going to be responsible for higher-level health emergencies than they would be necessarily where we could ally them with robust nursing care and a great number of doctors and even better EMS professionals. And so we believe that that, that extra time on task provides them with the opportunity to get the skills necessary and to feel comfortable stepping into what are going to be some expanded roles that might not be expected in an area where there are larger numbers of other healthcare providers.
Thank you, that's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Thank you so much. Mr. Carter, I don't see anything, so thank you very much, we appreciate your advocacy on our behalf. Okay, next up on the agenda is Faculty Association, Mr. Brett Cooper, President of our Faculty Association.
Good evening and thank you trustee Ingram. So I want to start off by saying that I assure you I'm not going to attempt to negotiate from the podium tonight. I've been admonished for that a few years back and I will make sure not to cross any lines. What I want to do tonight is inform you and educate you about some issues that are relevant to recent discussions that have been on the board, on the board's mind. So recently, the board has taken much time to discuss the internal equity issues for staff's pay. In fact, trustee Musial has said on several occasions, "We worship at the altar of internal equity." It's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, it's just a policy choice. I agree somewhat with that position. I disagree that it's not a good thing or a bad thing. I think it is a good thing. It shows employees that their time here at the college is valued. Although this afternoon, we learned that the internal equity fixes for full-time staff have been put on hold, the project is merely being moved back in the timeline, yet it's still going to be dealt with. I bring this up as a prelude to a quick introduction to the internal equity issues in the faculty ranks that have existed for years and previous boards have done little or nothing to alleviate. Yes, our contract is negotiated, but it takes two parts, two parties to agree to fix the problems. Past board teams have not been interested or, or were unaware of the internal equity issues. Tonight, I'm going to tell you about two of those internal equity issues. The first is the lab issue. Faculty who teach lab classes are not given full credit toward their workload for those labs. Depending on the type of lab, they may either get a 0.5, 0.75, or 0.85 load factor. So for example, an organic chemistry professor may teach an organic chemistry class, which is a five-hour course, but is broken into a three-hour lecture and two three-hour labs. But this, but they only get a 2.25 credit hours towards their load for those three-hour labs because of the 0.75 factor. Although they're in class actively working with the students for nine hours each week, three for lecture and two three-hour labs, they only get seven and a half credits towards their workload. So to make load with, which is typically looked at as 15 hours, they actually have to teach 18 hours. This is despite the finding of two consecutive joint administrative faculty workload committees that have found that labs should be credited at, at a full 1.0 factor. Labs are not limited to the science division. Industrial Technology, Arts Humanities, Design and Social Sciences, Career and Technology Education and Business Divisions all have labs. On a topic that I've talked to you about a couple of times, faculty on extended contracts. I want to remind you that 10- and 12-month faculty exist in, I believe, all but two divisions here at the college. 10- and 12-month faculty suffer from a salary inequity when compared to our nine-month colleagues. A faculty member with 10 years of experience was moved onto the new salary schedule that was negotiated two years ago. 10 years of experience was moved to step nine for a nine-month faculty member, but only step seven for the same faculty member if they were on a 10-month contract. And here's the kicker, a 12-month faculty member with 10 years of experience was moved to step three. If we use nine-month, nine-month contract as the base, that translates to a 10-month faculty member only making 6.27% more than a nine-month faculty member with the same experience even though they work 11% more. For a 12-month faculty, the discrepancy is even worse. Compared to nine-month faculty with the same experience, a 12-month faculty member is only making 16.67% more. That's equivalent to 10 and a half months despite being on a 12-month contract. Yes, these are issues that need to be resolved in negotiations, but that takes the board team informed and willing to tackle these issues. My goal for tonight was to inform you about the issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Brett. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cooper?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since my name was invoked, I, I feel, I don't really have a question Brett, but I'm one of the ones, and I don't know if admonished is the right terms, but we have practiced for my 11 years on the board to not negotiate from the podium. And if you, if the FA, the Faculty Union wants to bring up informational things here, that will require board members to respond with the information of what we've done in the past. And we've looked at both of those issues in the past. They've been the subject of a negotiation and they're the subject of the current master agreement. It's a, it may be a fine line and a gray area as to whether we're negotiating, but I want to make sure, especially for our new trustees who haven't been through collective bargaining, we were well-aware of and well-informed about those efforts. And I also recall, unless I'm wrong, that the faculty wasn't completely clear about what it wanted as a result of those studies. And so we'll continue to try to do our best in good faith and I'm sure you will as well.
Absolutely.
But I, I will continue to grunch about items from the podium that suggest the board doesn't know anything about issues that are out there that are subject to the collective bargaining agreement, because I think those should be handled in the collective bargaining process, which will be next year. I know those are issues, I've heard them for a number of years. And I know we haven't addressed them satisfactorily to the Faculty Union. There, there, there are some I haven't been happy with, there are some you haven't been happy with, and that's the nature of negotiations. So we should continue to discuss those in the, in the bargaining process.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just briefly would like to say, I think it would be inappropriate for me to comment on the comments you made from the podium, but I would love to hear about the wonderful things that our faculty is doing. I always enjoy hearing about that when, when we have these board meetings in the past when I was on the board. It's always exciting to hear what the faculty is doing and I, and I think that the community likes to hear that information as well, so.
Yes. Yes, and I have done that many times, it's not tonight.
Any other comments for Mr. Cooper? Okay, seeing none, thank you Brett.
Thank you.
Our next item is Johnson County Education Research Triangle, that is Mr. Trustee Musial.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle is funded by a 1/8 cent sales tax that was approved by the Johnson County voters in November of 2008. 2022 was a superb year based, as I've said before, partly on the fact that we have inflation. So that 1/8 cent raises more money on higher-priced goods. For 2022, a total of 24.1 million was raised for the KU Cancer Center, KU Edwards Campus and K-State Olathe. That's 2.8 million more than the year before, almost a million dollars more for each of the three campuses and a 13.5% increase. So the, what, one of the J-Cert board's obligations out, the main obligation is to make sure that money is spent on areas that the voters approved in 2008. And so that's why there is a, a board of directors, I think it's called for J-Cert, that the college has one appointee to and I'm serving in that role currently. So that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Musial? Mr. Musial, do you see any questions? Okay, now I grabbed the big screen, thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. It looks like the next item is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. I do not have a formal report this evening because our next quarterly meeting is not until April. I did want to let everyone know, I wasn't sure if Mr. Carter would mention it or not, but when he mentioned, made reference to Senate Bill 48, which had to do with the Technical Education Authority, that I did provide written and oral testimony in support of that Senate bill on behalf of KACC as the past president, just so everyone is aware of that. Our president, Arlen Leicher, was attending ACCT in DC, so I was asked to do that. And Dr. Bound and I discussed that and thought it would be a good idea if we just let everyone know that I did testify on behalf of that bill in support of it. And ultimately, as he mentioned, you know, there was a group that met and I think the restructuring of TEA is probably, will benefit everyone, so it turned out to be a good thing. But we, we testified in front of Senator Mum Gardner and the Higher Ed Committee and just think there was a really good discussion and I'm excited to see how that moves forward. So wanted to let everyone know that. There was also a Kansas Board of Regents dinner last night that is coordinated through KACC and presidents and the chairs are invited to attend. I understand Dr. Bound was there as well as trustee Musial and didn't know if either one of those would care to share a little bit about that.
It was, it was an honor. Chair, Chair Cross couldn't make it and, and you were out of town Nancy, so he asked if I would join. And I've been to that before, it's a great opportunity to meet other presidents from community colleges and technical colleges and to meet with the Board of Regents. And I know three or four of them fairly well and it was a great opportunity to meet the ones I, I don't know and visit with them. And they actually made us go through an exercise after dinner, so it was a working dinner. The three questions were, where do, what, what do we want to be, how do we want to define higher education in Kansas? Number two, what are the barriers to reaching that definition? And number three, where would we like to be five to seven years from now? And I think there was fairly consistent comments about finding a system that's accessible to everybody where they are in their learning experience, making sure that if you flow from a technical college or a community college into our four-year universities, you do that as efficiently as possible, your transfers credit, your credits transfer, maybe better English. And it, it's a good experience and I, I really appreciated, I think we have a really strong Board of Regents right now. There are some very smart people on there. Two that were heavily engaged in K-12 education, several that have been engaged in higher education and high-level businesses like the CEO of, of Northern Santa Fe who has a connection to this campus, Carl Ice. So it was, it was a good experience and I appreciate KACC setting that up and the opportunity to go.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Dr. Bound, did you have anything?
No, I think trustee Musial summarized it very well.
Okay, very good. Thank you Greg and we're grateful that you were able to attend. Our next item is the Foundation Report and I will ask trustee Ortan to please provide that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we want to let everyone know that we thank everyone who has submitted nominations for Johnson County End of the Year. The deadline has been extended to 5:00 PM on February 21st. If you're interested, you can go to jccc.edu/jcoy, Johnson County End of the Year. So please submit some with the extended deadline. Also, please put in your calendars for November 11th, 2023, that is our next Some Enchanted Evening event. Spring Semester scholarships are being awarded and 2023, 2024 JCCC scholarship applications are open. The Foundation will have a spring scholarship luncheon, we'd love to have all trustees there. It is on April 11th in the Capitol, Capitol Federal Room and more details will be coming soon. The Foundation Executive Director met with the IDC to talk about how we can help put together fundraising strategies that help meet the goals of the different departments. IDC is Dean's Council. Foundation Winter, Winter Board Social, the JCCC Winter Foundation Board Social will be held on February 23rd, is at the Wiley Culinary and Hospitality Academy. Join us and hear from a student and learn about our new barbecue pavilion. And then the Foundation Investment Committee meeting will be on February 21st at the Midwest Trust Office. Trust Office. That is all that I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Rutan. Appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions for Trustee Rutan? Seeing none, I appreciate again that report. It's always good to hear about what's going on in the Foundation. College Council is next with Jason Arnett. Good evening.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jason Arnett. During the day, I run retail dining service operations, for those of you that don't know me. So I have a very short report because the College Council has not met since the last time. Our original meeting was supposed to be yesterday, and we've had enough foresight to move it, so. So our next meeting will be next Wednesday on the 22nd, and we'll discuss our progress on the communication issue that was referred up to us through Staff Council. We have a subcommittee that has met three times now, and through that subcommittee, we determined we wanted to do some more research around the issues that came up. So we're collaborating with institutional research on the design of our questions and how we want to go about finding out what we need to know. And then we're also working with the, forgive me, the employee engagement folks on the Strategic Planning Committee. So we'll know more next week, and we will meet twice before I see you again next month. So that's the end of my report.
Well, it sounds like we can expect a full report next time.
Yes.
Double, double, double the word. Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, Jason, I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much for being with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll move on to committee reports and recommendations. Our first item listed is collegial steering. Since Trustee Cross is not here, actually, Trustee Cross was unable to attend that meeting. So Dr. Bound and I kind of led that group. The focus of our discussion, we had two items on the agenda. The first one was legislative, the session, and discussing that. And the second one was shared governance. We ended up having quite a robust and healthy and very rich and lively discussion on the legislative session. We talked about the role of the college. We talked about our lobbyists. We talked about the involvement at KACC, and it was rather informational, if you will, and just kind of sharing with everyone how things move and talking about our opportunities to convene with the legislators and how we get together with them several times a year, and just the importance of those relationships. So I feel like we actually ended a few minutes early because we felt like we needed some additional time, more than just a few minutes, to really begin the discussion or talk about shared governance. So we left that for next month's agenda. But I think it was a really good discussion, and I think it's just always good to broaden our conversations and let people know where we're coming from with our involvement directly with the legislature, and then to let them know how we pull in and involve the lobbyists and, and other people who are attending at different levels throughout the state as well as on behalf of Johnson County Community College. So really good discussion, Dr. Bound. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that as well, but it was, it was a good meeting, really good meeting.
Yes, it was, and you covered it nicely, so.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. Thanks to all those members, too. Collegial steering meets at 3:30 in the afternoon, so it's after a long, full day for everyone that they come prepared and ready to discuss and listen and, and offer their input. So we always appreciate getting together with them. Our next item is Employee Engagement and Development Committee, and I will turn that over to Trustee Hamel.
All right, thank you. The Employee Engagement Development Committee met at 10:45 AM on Wednesday, February 1st, right here in the boardroom. We had Colleen, who covered the voluntary early retirement plan, VERB. She's actually Vice President of Human Resources. Not much has changed since the last time, but we have 69 employees that are retired and given notice, intend to retire effective July 1st of 2022 through the sunset of VERB. The total actual payout has been $780,000, and we're estimating another 1.4 for those also retiring, depending on sick leave. We also covered the Employee Engagement Survey. Ms. Chandler provided an update on the Employee Engagement Survey. Survey will be open for two weeks in early February. Once the survey closes, it will take the vendor approximately 30 days to analyze the data. Survey themes were discussed. The vendor will develop strategies to address areas where JCCC seems in need for improvement. Anticipated timeline for sharing the results are with the Cabinet in late March, Employee Engagement Development Committee, April 5th, Managers, April 13th, and all the employees mid to late April. The last employee survey was in 2019. There should be some similar themes with this as well. I did discuss I had some concerns about the continuity between 2019 and the 2023. We also talked about job families and career laddering. The key deliverables from this project included job family architecture, market analysis of jobs, job description development, placement of employees within architecture. JCCC may need to update our compensation philosophy, which could lead to a redesign of our current paid tables. The next Employee Engagement Development Committee, we scheduled for 1:00 PM on Wednesday, April 5th, right here in the boardroom as well. And all the minutes can be found on page one of the packet if you haven't wanted any more details on that. Nancy, anything else you wanted to add?
No, I, I don't think so. I thought that was a really good report, Trustee Hamel, so I think I am good with that. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for employee engagement? Okay, very good. Our next item is the Management and Finance Committee Report. Trustee Musil, if you will lead us in that direction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held its meeting on Wednesday, February 1st. Trustee Hamel and I were there, along with members of the staff. The information can be found on pages five through 13 of the board packet. First thing we did was receive a report on the Auxiliary Fund. Janelle Vogler, Assistant Vice President for Business Services, along with Ashante Thompson, the Director of the Bookstore, and Mike LaPreda, Director of Dining Services, presented information on the Auxiliary Enterprise Fund, basically showing the overview of operations and individual financial results of the bookstore and our dining services, and issues facing the overall auxiliary fund balance, largely challenged these days by the fact that the bookstore doesn't throw off a million-dollar profit, which we use to subsidize other portions of our student services or our services on campus, including the dining services. So there's a budget challenge there when we don't have, when we've lost the, kind of the profit center for auxiliary services. We also looked at, received a financial ratio analysis from Associate Vice President of Financial Services, CFO Rachel Leers. It's a review of the college's financial health using a number of different ratios from our audited financial statements through June 30th of 2022. That's compiled annually and monitors our financial ratios over time. I think it's fair to say that all of our financial ratios look strong and are in good shape. We looked at four other agreements with organizations presented during the, the report. One is to update a, or have a renewal agreement, I guess, with the, with the City of Shawnee for the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, which allows the City of Shawnee to reduce the property taxes on new developments, new businesses, new improvements that happen in a certain area of the city, largely around Johnson Drive and Neiman in the downtown Shawnee area. The first 10-year plan was adopted in 2012. It was renewed in 2000, or in 2002, it was renewed in 2012, and now we're trying, we're renewing it for another 10-year period. We do that with other cities, I think Gardner and Olathe.
Mm-hmm.
Soto and Lenexa.
And De Soto and Lenexa, that have certain neighborhood revitalization areas that take advantage of the state program. We also discussed an agreement with Vertex Professional Services relating to the college's automotive technology program, and had proposed agreements with the Kansas Department of Commerce and the Kansas Commission on Veterans Affairs for use of office space here on our campus. And that information can be found on page 48 of the Consent Agenda in our packet. We have a couple of recommendations for tonight. The first-
Mr. Trustee Musil, could, could I just ask, this is Trustee Ingram, I apologize for interrupting you, but as you go through these for the recommendations, since I am on Zoom, would, would those people who are making those motions and seconds just please, when they make them, give their name as well so that I, I can hear those?
Well, we'll make sure to identify ourselves.
Thank you.
The first recommendation from the committee is that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of college administration to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Shawnee, agreeing to participate in the proposed Neighborhood, 2023 Neighborhood Revitalization Plan as I described. And I guess I will make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Laura Smith Everett.
Okay, I'm, I, I first of all heard Trustee Rail, so I'm going to go ahead and take that one at this point, that it was moved by Trustee Musil and seconded by Trustee Rail. Is there any discussion about that motion?
I'd make a quick comment. I wasn't exactly sure what it was when it came up and had to do some more research to get a better understanding and call a few people. Basically, what it allows people to do is take, make improvements to their homes or businesses up to $10,000, and that $5,000, whatever project, $10,000 they decide to do will not be taxable and not be added to their property tax. So you're looking at approximately $100 savings if you take it full advantage of it for your property taxes.
It's, it's a small stimulus for redevelopment, but it has worked in, in, I know in Olathe, when we renewed that last one, we had a report on that, and they were pleased with it, and it seems like Shawnee is as well.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any other, any other comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and I will say 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Musil. Go ahead.
It's a single-source recommendation. The Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration for a single-source justification for sporting, and basically a sponsorship app, sponsorship process with Sporting Kansas City for a three-year amount of $280,944. No sense, this would be a continuation of a relationship we've had for a number of years, and I would make that motion.
Second, Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you. Okay, it has been moved by Trustee Musil and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett to approve the single-source justification to Sporting KC for a three-year amount of $280,944. Is there any discussion?
I, I did have one question about this. I thought, I said it would be nice if Sporting KC would include some tickets as part of this package so that we could give those as perks to the students. And I don't know if it's possible.
As part of the package, it has been.
Okay, it is. Okay, good.
From, from the audience, Chris Gray, our Vice President for Communication, said that has been part of the package.
Great.
And-
Thank you.
We've never gotten any of those. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 6-0. Mr. Musil, go ahead.
Next item is our favorite thing, which is to understand the significant cost of renovating bathrooms across campus. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the board accept the recommendation of administration to approve the low bid for Infinity Group for the Industrial Training Center and the Student Center restroom renovation in the amount of $763,244, with an additional 10% contingency of $76,324.40 to allow for possible unforeseen costs, for a total amount of $839,568.40. And I would so move, and I think there, I think there will be some questions and discussion, Madam Chair.
Certainly. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Trustee Rail.
Thank you, Trustee Rail. Okay, we do have a, a motion and a second, and we can begin the discussion at this time.
Sure, Nancy.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Tom Hall once again for giving me another tour and being very informational on the scenario and situation. Thanks, thank you again. So went through there, there was definitely some issues in a few of these restrooms in the railroad building. We obviously had some issues with one of them. The partitions are pretty, pretty damaged, need, definitely need repaired quickly. Lighting was definitely a problem in there. And then you had the other ones would have some changes to the ADA requirements, and I'm not exactly sure when that, what year the changes are made. Those are 15-year-old restrooms, I believe, that when they were put in. Some part in time, since then, the ADA has made some requirement changes to those restrooms. So this is one of the ways to fix it. One of the things that I asked for is I was trying to see if we can find any details on what it would cost to just make the repairs to the railroad, the building, the railroad building without necessarily doing the full renovation. These all look great, and I would love to pay for everything, but we do have limited resources. And my concern is when we keep raising taxes every year, we raised tuition again this year, I'd like to slow down our spending till we're not in the same place again. So those are my concerns.
And, Mark.
Thank you.
Trustee, Trustee Hamel raised those at, at the committee level, and, and I think he's, he raises good questions about, and I think maybe some of us getting more information about how old the bathrooms are, you know, some more information that, that justifies what we do, and whether some partial work is sufficient to do it instead of the full work. In this case, I'm satisfied that, that this process is okay, but I think those are good questions going forward.
Thank you, Chair Musil. Not Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Musil, I'm sorry. Okay, Trustee Smith Everett.
My question is for Tom about the two buildings where we're doing the renovations, restroom renovation, if we have single-stall, non-gendered bathrooms in those buildings available for students.
Mr. Hall is approaching. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Would you go ahead and identify yourself and give your title?
Tom Hall, I'm the Associate Vice President for Campus Services and Facility Planning.
Thank you.
So in those, in the Student Center, there are some single-stall restrooms that can be identified as unisex or that type of restroom. A lot of our signage doesn't indicate that, but these restrooms are large restrooms, and to redo these restrooms to make them gender-neutral would be very costly because of the design of the building at this point. In ITC, I do not think we have single-stall restrooms, and these, these, these are all large restrooms with several stalls. And the same thing there, it would be very costly to redo the design of the, of the building itself.
Thank you for that. I will make my comments brief. I, I will just say, as I said to Tom in person during Committee Day, that I think it's important that moving forward as a college, we are very thoughtful about the bathroom planning. I have learned a lot through a close individual whose child is actually a JCCC student who is transgender and has to plan their day around restrooms that are appropriate for them and safe for them. Safety is one of the biggest concerns. And so moving forward with bathroom renovations, I think, as Trustee Hamel said, I agree about staying within our means. And I also think we need to be sure that we're very thoughtful to include single-stall restrooms. I was quite surprised to find out that my daughter's high school did that with all of their sex bathroom that were similar to these, in that you had male and female, and then you had several stalls per bathroom, and they've turned that entire area into non-gendered single stall for anybody of any kind. And I think for non-binary and trans students, as well as students who may have other issues or need to be able to get access to a place that single stalls can allow them to, I think that that's something we should consider moving forward. And I just wanted to take the time to echo that, or speak up to that now with this renovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, seeing none, we do have a motion and a second to approve the low bid from Infinity Group for Industrial Training Center and Student Center restroom renovation in the amount of $763,244, with an additional 10% contingency to, of $76,324.40 to allow for possible unforeseen costs, for a total amount of $839,568.40. At this time, I will go ahead and take a vote. All in favor? Greg, I may need your help on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Trustee Hamill?
Correct.
So that vote is five to one. Okay, so motion passes, five to one. All right, thank you. Trustee Musel, we have one more recommendation.
The last item is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board accept the recommendation of College Administration to approve the low bid from Premier Contracting, Inc. for roof replacement on the Commons Building in the amount of $549,598.00, with an additional 10% contingency of $54,659.80 to allow for possible unforeseen costs, for a total amount of $601,257.80, and I would so move.
I'll second, Trustee Rail.
Thank you, Trustee Rail, I appreciate that. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the low bid from Premier Contracting for roof replacement, Commons Building in the amount of $549,598, with an additional 10% contingency of $54,659.80 to allow for possible unforeseen costs, for a total amount of $601,257.80. Is there any discussion?
Trustee Hamill.
Oh, thank you, Trustee Hamill, I'm sorry, it's just, just a tad bit tough to see, so I appreciate you addressing.
No worries, thank you. A few things that came up about it, the roof, one of my biggest one, we had an appraisal done, I think, three years ago or two years ago, looking at the lifespans of the roofs. One of the things that came up, this roof had between three to five years left, and I think we're at year two. Again, just being careful with our finances, and you know, one of the things that Chair Lee was talking about was, he says it could get even worse than we're expecting, and again, anything we can do to try to be ready for that, I think is, we should be looking at more than anything right now. If we could wait on this a year or two, I'd rather do that, so that's kind of where I'm standing with this.
Thank you. Any other comments? No other comments? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and take that vote, I've already read the recommendation, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, and any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right. Okay, motion passes, five to one.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, and it looks like the final committee report and recommendation is that from Student Success, which I will go ahead and read, those minutes are found in the Board Packet on pages 14 to 15. The Student Success Committee met at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, in the Hugh W. Spear Boardroom. Gerberthan Singh and Andrew Lutz provided an overview of the curriculum approval process. The approval process begins at the division or departmental level and proceeds accordingly to the college level and the state board, K-Board level. Effective and continuous communication is key to smooth approval process. After the successful completion of all approvals, the Curriculum Office collaborates with the Register's Office to add or modify courses or programs to banner and confirms migration to the appropriate catalog of record. The new catalog publishes on or about March 1st annually before the summer/fall schedule goes live. It was a short meeting, the next Student Success Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, at 10:00 AM in the same Hugh Spear Boardroom. And that is all that was included in that report, so short meeting. Any questions? Okay. We will move on then to the President's Recommendations for Action. And the first item on that is the Treasurer's Report, which is Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. The Treasurer's Report can be found in your Board Packet for the month ended December 31st, 2022. Some items of note include Page 1, which contains the General Post-Secondary Technical Educational Funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. The General Fund unencumbered, unencumbered cash balance was $66 million as of December 31st, 2022, a decrease of $8 million from the previous year. This budgeted decrease is due to the renovation of the Science and CLBA buildings, which is being funded by the General Fund Reserves. The expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended December 31st, 2022, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Musel.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We do have a motion for approval of the Treasurer's Report. Is there any discussion regarding that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a comment. First of all, Trustee Smith Everett, you are an excellent ventriloquist, because you were frozen on the screen, but we heard every word. So I think you have a future. I just draw everybody's attention to page 26 of the Packet, which is the graph that shows where our reserves are. We've talked about reserves a lot over the, over the years I've been on the Board, and we always, our policy is to track those as of December 31st, which is the low point in our year, as Rachel tells us constantly and reminds us, and it, you notice the dip when we don't have tuition and we haven't received ad valorem taxes, we get pretty low, and we're actually lower than we were last year. So when you, when citizens ask us about why we have a reserve, it's for those emergencies that might be unforeseen now when the state doesn't come through or our tuition doesn't come through. It's also so that we can do things like spend cash on our science project, science renovation project. But I think it's important that we continue to watch that and notice that we, we should always review it in terms of December 31st, not those times of the year when all of our revenues come in. That's the only comment I had, Madam Chair, thank you.
Good reminder, thank you very much, Trustee Musel. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we do have a motion to, a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six nothing. Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. That moves us on to the Monthly Report to the Board, and that is Dr. Andy Baugh.
All right, thank you, Trustee Ingram. Again, it's a pleasure to provide you with the monthly update. Before I get into it though, I just want to make a couple introductory comments. First of all, you got to spend some time this evening with Sharaya Gavel, and Trustee Musel, you know, I think commented about the, I think you did, about the number, she was recognized among the other athletes last Wednesday for their academic excellence, and, and wanted to note that she was one of 127 of our athletes, student athletes, who was recognized for having a fall GPA of 3.0 or higher. That's 127 out of 180 athletes, or if I do my math right with a little bit of rounding, 71%. So that is, and in any given year, we fall somewhere in that 70 to 75% range of student athletes receiving academic honors, and for me, while I believe in athletics, it's really about student success, and we have tremendous success with our student athletes, as we do with students who participate in many clubs and organizations, that we see very strong student success. At your stations, at your spots tonight, we have the, the annual report to the community that was distributed, I believe, last week, and arrives in about 4,000 homes and businesses throughout the county, and is available online for all to see, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it with the Marketing and Strategic Communications Group, so I appreciate it with the input of many folks across the campus, so thank you. I also wanted to recognize this evening that at the Board Table with us this evening is Rachel Leers, who has now stepped into the role of Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, and I wanted to congratulate and recognize her for that, so congratulations, Rachel. In addition, in the room, yes, we can do that. In addition, in this room, I want to recognize Colleen Chandler, who has stepped officially into the role of Vice President for Human Resources, and I appreciate your leadership and the work that we get to do together moving ahead, so Colleen as well. All right, so let's jump into my report. Again, I'll move through it quickly. We're going to talk about enrollment, both on the continuing ed workforce development side, as well as our credit enrollment, and then I'll talk briefly about strategic planning work that's happening, and wrap up with an update on job families and compensation work that's taking place. So with that, you got to spend a few minutes with Sharaya. I promise we won't bring you a soccer player every month, but we just happened to have the last two months, because they're really good folks. Anyways, the continuing ed group enrollment, as Elisa Wallman, Vice President Wallman, reported last month, you know, some of the funding streams that we've had access to in the, in the last couple of years have softened up, although they're re-engaging now, and will provide some additional assistance as we move forward for individuals who are seeking training and career development opportunities. We are certainly down from last year, but up from two years ago, and the team continues to work very hard at that. If I move on to the credit enrollment, we've now reached census date, which is 20 days into the semester, where we take a snapshot of, of where enrollment is, and we are up 4.4% in headcount and 4 point, well, 4% in credit hours. And again, I'd like to, to recognize the team across the college, that's the entire college, that do the work to, to serve students and serve students well, and so I want to highlight a couple different areas within this. While we're up 4%, if you look at kind of what we're seeing nationally and regionally, you see anything from 2% to 5% down is generally where most community colleges are within the country. There are a number of contributing factors to our enrollment being up. We are up in most demographic looks at our student population, but there are some, some notable changes. For example, the metro rate, right? So these are students outside of Johnson County, outside of the state of Kansas, so on the Missouri side, who are choosing to come to Johnson County Community College, we're up a little over 9% with that student population. If we look at our college now, again, high school enrollment, between college now and our Quickstep enrollment, we're up 11%, and we're up about 18, 19% in online, exclusively online students. We are down in female students between the ages of the category of 25 to 59, we're down about 3%. Please keep in mind that that's, you know, it's heavily influenced by continuing students, and you're down like we were in this group of students by about 8.6% in the fall at end of term. There's, there's, you might expect to see a decline. The good news is it's 3% and not 8.6%. And, and then, so that's really the demographics I wanted to point out there, although I will also say, for African-American students, we're down about 5%, which is about what we were down in the fall. However, there's another effort that's happened that we can attribute to the work of our faculty and staff, and that is that we saw a 3.4% reduction in the number of students who either dropped or withdrew, have dropped or withdrawn so far this semester. So again, deliberate efforts by faculty and staff to help make sure that students get into paid status, to make sure that they're progressing properly in their courses, and so I think there's really good, really good reflection in there, because, you know, you certainly will hear us talk about enrollment, and that's a number that we are always measured against within the college, but heavily outside of the college, because it's an easy number to understand, how many, how many people are here compared to some previous time slot. But I also want to remember that the effort on retention, retaining students, again, the 3.4% improvement in, in, you know, drop rate to this point in the semester is notable work, because it really is about students retaining students with progression, and a precursor to that is that they're engaged as students and that they're learning, right? Our primary focus as an institution is providing an environment where students can learn. And so, it's learning, it's progression within their program, retention from term to term, and eventually working towards completion. So I think there's lots of good news in that report for this month. Let's see, all right, let me, let me stop there and just see if there are any questions before I move on.
Trustee Smith Everett has one.
Thank you. Whoever that brilliant person is that prompts it, so that I don't have to go find on mute, I want to thank you, it's probably Jason, but I appreciate our tech team. Dr. Baugh, I just wanted to echo what you were saying about retention and provide a little bit of mirroring that's going on in the K-12 world. I've spoken to, it was conferences this week in the district that I worked for last week, and we have been discussing the post-COVID effect on K-12 students, and that really is a range from K all the way to 12, and how students, even though they may be very motivated to return to school or to start a journey at a post-K-12 institution, they sometimes, their desires don't align with their habits. And in this post-COVID world, we have really seen a decline in students' persistence and their long-term motivation to meet goals and expectations, and to really have the, 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 I'm losing my words, and I apologize, but the ability to stick with it even when it gets tough, the grit, that's the word I was looking for. And so I really appreciate you commenting about the retention, because I am really excited about these numbers, I'm really glad to see that we're on the upswing for enrollment, but we will probably have students who quickly will figure out that college is a lot harder than they dreamed it would be, or that what they thought they could do is going to be a lot slower or more tedious than they understood. And so I think it's incumbent on all of us at the college to ensure them that there are ways that they can be successful, and in some cases, it may just be an education of how college works. And I was speaking with a faculty member this week who talked about a student who ended up getting Fs in their class, and then told, she happened to run into her this week and asked how she was, and she was in tears and said, "I'm going to fail again this semester, my mother had a almost terminal car accident, and she is having to balance the, the bills of a home as well as going to college." And she hadn't told anyone that, and she didn't know that it was okay to tell anybody or to get help, and that there's ways that the college, she could get help. So I just wanted to echo that in mere sort of the K-12 experience that's going on. I'm so glad they're here, and I just hope that we can retain them so that they can find success for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great comments, thanks, Trustee Smith Everett.
All right, seeing no others, I will continue through the, through my report. Last, oh boy, now it's, it's almost two weeks ago now, we held a strategic plan review session, a day-long session here on campus, and really spent the time with, with more than 100 faculty, staff and students participating in that day to look at the goals, the strategies, the progress that's taking place. That happened in the morning, followed by the use of survey tools to, to help us get a sense from their interpretation of what they heard in the morning, of the teams' work that are happening in each of the areas of the strategic plan, to look at feedback on, you know, do we start something new? Do we stop that aspect of the plan? Is there something that we need to change about it? Do we, do we continue as, as is, as planned? Or is there something, has that aspect of the plan gone operational and it, you know, it? it flows into just how we do things? So that feedback was used in the afternoon. Each of the, the goal teams looked at their strategy maps. Strategy maps are a tool that allows you to connect visually the strategies and action steps that could go into a strategic planning effort towards implementation of really connecting those dots. And they spent an hour and a half or so with each of the teams looking at those to see if any edited, if there were any edits that needed to happen within the plan. And so the strategy teams are continuing to take that effort and the, the work from that afternoon to look at how do they continue to work through the plans to see if there are any modifications that need to happen to the plan. I'd expect that we'll be bringing that back to you through the committee meetings throughout this spring. But I really applaud the group that, that came together. We had faculty and staff facilitators that led each of those sessions, and they really did a fine job. There's one person in particular that I'd like to draw attention to, and that is Karen Kohler. Karen handled the logistics of, together with others, certainly some help from our office and so forth, the day of, but all of the logistics of how do you make this effort continue to move forward in a meaningful way on a monthly basis, but particularly really poured it all in on the strategic planning effort. And so we'll be bringing back more detail to you, but wanted to report to you and to the campus and broader community, the work that's happening there. So. The last area that, of my report, frankly, is one that I'm not terribly excited about bringing to you. But the practical reality is, we're in this together, and we have to talk about how things really are. As you know, we're in the, the process of working through a contract with Culpepper and Associates. We are really close to having a contract, and I would expect in the coming days, we will have that, not coming weeks, but coming days. As you received today, and the campus community received this afternoon, I have asked us to, to take a pause on the internal equity work. That, you know, as you hear us talk about it in previous meetings, that's where we look at the years of relevant experience and look at how does that align to where they are relative to others within their pay levels. But to do so in a line to the, the needs of, for data and process that Culpepper will need, and let them guide us through that process. I know that, that, you know, that, that a buzz kicked around campus this afternoon, and I'm sorry for that. But I think most importantly, it's important that we get this right and that we make sure that the compensation structure that we have is not only does it provide internal equity, but it is competitive within the marketplace and is what we can afford to do, choose to afford to do, to be competitive in the marketplace for our positions across full-time staff. That's the group that, that is the focus this first time around. And that we use that compensation structure that's driven by the work that needs to be done by our staff across the, across the college, to do that in light of the, the market study that needs to be done, that we've committed to as a part of this process. So what does that mean? That means putting a pause on this and the adjustments that weren't going to happen in terms of the market competitiveness, weren't going to happen until the work with Culpepper was done. That's been the plan all along. But that rather than step into it now and run the risk of, of, of making adjustments that aren't aligned to a market-based compensation structure, that it's more important that we get it right and that we believe we can do that based on the feedback from Culpepper and the timeline that they've identified, that we can still have that all done within 2023. And it's not the, you know, 18 to 24-month process that we had originally talked about. And so I know that, I know that frankly, there'll be many in the college who are disappointed to hear this news. And to you as trustees and to them, I apologize for that, but I think it's more important that we get it right and not run the risk of creating bigger problems down the road. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions that you may have about this. And I may ask Colleen to join me if needed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
We have, we've, we've been in this rut for a while, and the most important thing is that we get it right going forward. And so I'm, we've talked a lot about how fast we can get this done, and it was never going to be fast enough because we got it, we have to collect data and we have to, and now that we have a consultant, I think it's important that we allow them to use, use their expertise to help us so that we get it right and we don't have something to fix six months after we do the next fix. So I, and I know it's disappointing to everybody, and I think all, most of us are disappointed, but understand that we've hired somebody through a competitive process that has a lot of burden on their shoulders, as does Colleen, to get this right. But getting it right, as you said, is more important than getting it fast.
Madam Chair, if I may, I-
Yes, thank you, Trustee Real.
I would echo that obviously there are some folks who are disappointed in this decision, but when I was growing up, my mommy used to say to me, "The hurrieder you go, the behinder you get." And I think that the last thing that we want to do is, is jump into this and accomplish what we believe is internal equity, only to look around a few months from now and find out that we're not in equity with the market. And then we've created a, a bit of a nightmare for everyone and, and even further disappointment. So I think, I think this is absolutely the right decision, as difficult as it was to make.
We may have been separated at birth. My mother said that.
Did she not? Trust me, Trustee Musil.
Not going there, are you?
Thank you, Trustee Real. Does anyone else have anything to offer, comment-wise?
Chair Ingram, can I speak as well?
Certainly, Trustee Hamel, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so we're going through this and, you know, echoing a lot of what was just said as well. My biggest concern was obviously we made some mistakes we needed to, needed to correct. And some of these multiple steps we were taking to get there didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, and that was one of my biggest concerns. And unfortunately, it is pushed further down for the first one. But bringing it closer together, I think we have a better chance of getting it correct from the first, first spot. So yeah, I understand that some people may be disappointed, but it does, I think this will be better in the long run. My other concern, and I know we're talking about later, is the part-time, is not being included in this correct, and how quickly we can look at those things as well. Obviously, they're a valuable part of our team as well, so. Whenever we can find out that, I would love to, to know.
Anyone else have any other comments? I, I think I will just step in and just say, and I think I said this perhaps at the last employee engagement meeting that we had, our committee meeting, that I think, you know, just communication is vital, you know? And that's what we've been struggling with, I think, as much as anything else over the past few months, too, is just making sure that, that we're aware. And, you know, I know we've discussed the possibility of, you know, having monthly reports to us. We're back in our committee structure, if it makes sense. You know, we have an employee engagement committee, and I would hope that, you know, the, the chair of that committee, Trustee Hamel, would agree with me that we would like to see some sort of something on a monthly basis. And would expect that, quite frankly, based upon where we are right now, because we, we are eight months past. I mean, we've, we've been talking about this for a long time, as Trustee Musil said earlier. So I just think communication is, is vital. This is, this is, it's so important to be open and transparent. I know that's what people ask of us, and I would just ask that same respectful openness and transparency in communication as much as can possibly be had, so.
That's our commitment to you.
Thank you.
And to our employees. Colleen, is there anything you wanted to add to what I've shared tonight? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but-
No, I'll just-
Sorry.
She come up to the front, thank you, and introduce herself, please.
Yes.
Colleen Chandler, Vice President of Human Resources. Trustee Hamel, to your remarks about the internal equity for part-time, the exercise that we were initially undertaking this spring was for full-time employees, but the work with Culpepper will be for all employees, all staff, all non-bargaining staff, so part-time and full-time employees will be included in that project.
Excellent, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Colleen. So again, there's a lot of work that needs to happen that's ahead of us, right? I mean, there's a lot that's gone in to get us to this point in identifying an external partner that will rely heavily on the work of our HR team and employees across the college, right? There'll be ways that we all engage in this in terms of validating job descriptions and, and so forth as we move forward. So there's, there'll be a great deal of back and forth as we move from where we are today to a finished product, we anticipate in the fall. So with that-
President Bound, before you finish, I know, I feel like I also asked at the last employee engagement meeting about Culpepper and their work on equity, because I didn't remember that being included. So if we could clarify that and kind of see, I, I, I just was not understanding if that was part of what we initially engaged them on, because I thought we were moving ahead and doing that on our own. So if we could get some clarification for that committee work, that would be great.
Colleen's coming back to the podium.
Yep, good, okay, thank you, Colleen. Bless your heart.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. In response to your question or your comment, you're correct that Culpepper was not initially part of the work that we were undertaking this spring to address internal equity within our current structure. As we worked with Culpepper in preparation for finalizing this contract and identifying the scope of work, that's, it was through that process where we've determined that it would be best to move forward in this particular direction. So that you're correct that Culpepper was not initially part of that, but internal equity is a component of any compensation philosophy that we would have moving forward. And to do our best to align and integrate with that work and not work against that work within our current structure is part of the rationale for pausing the, the project this spring.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I think bringing that out in a, in a board meeting is just probably good information for those who are listening, too. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Trustee Engel, that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. All right. Okay, let me turn this over. We are ready for new business, and it does appear that we have one recommendation regarding the facilities naming committee, and I would ask that Kate Allen come for us.
Thank you. Kate Allen, Vice President for Advancements and Government Affairs. Happy to answer any questions about the new business proposal in front of you related to our naming, naming rights policy. There's three proposals, and hopefully they are self-explanatory. I'll thank Trustee Hamel and Trustee Smith Everett for serving on that committee. We met January 17th and are putting forth these three recommendations.
Madam Chair, could we just ask, could I just ask Kate to walk through the process so that folks know these aren't, these aren't random or arbitrary, and there is a specific policy that we follow?
There is a board policy, 217.05 is our policy, and then we have procedures around that as well. The Institutional Advancement Division is charged with collecting nominations, putting together a committee that is set forth in policy, and then holding that review of those nominations, and then deciding if recommendations should go forward to the trustees. Our, our namings can be for financial gifts, and they can also be for distinguished service. And the, the foundation is sometimes a part of that, sometimes not, if there's not a gift involved. But nobody can award or agree to naming rights other than our Board of Trustees. So the final stop is, is here for that final review.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead, and I will get that recommendation up. I'm suspecting that I should provide that recommendation, is that correct?
If you would, that would be-
I apologize, I did not-
Bring it forward.
Sure.
Or Mark or Laura, excuse me, Trustee Hamel.
I, I just didn't have clarification, I apologize.
That's fine.
Our first one is for JE, JE Dunn, Local Construction Company, to name our WCMT Room 109 after JE Dunn. That is tied to our campaign for the community, which is our capital campaign, which is for our roughly 2016 to 2019 campaign to support our major facilities master plan. And for gifts of $250,000 or more, we suggested as a foundation that we would propose to the trustees a naming. And JE Dunn met the financial requirement, and now we are proposing to the trustees that that classroom be named for them. Robert Die is the Chair of Construction Management, and of course, Dean Richard Ford are both aware of this opportunity and this being brought forth. I believe the second one is for the Jadel Family Foundation, for Harrison Jadel. The family foundation established at his death in 2016 resulted in numerous gifts to our Nerman Museum. And so as a result of more than $400,000 in gifts to the Nerman, it was proposed by leadership at the museum to name the mezzanine for Mr. Jadel. And then our third and final one is for Gene Hahn, whose legacy is enshrined actually outside these doors here on our, in our Wall of Honor. He is our founding facilities director. I think he built the first 13 buildings on our campus, served here from 1969 to 1996. And so we'd like to name the, what I call the Chiller Hill. I think some have called it Mount Hahn, that's right outside. And within it is a geothermal tank that's actually won some awards from then KC P&L for the engineering feat that is that hill that provides utility service to our campus. So Hahn Hill was recommended by our trustee, or by our retirees association.
Madam Trustee, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, I can make, go ahead and make those recommendations. I, I think I'm having connectivity issues because I-
Okay.
My, my packet froze, and now I'm trying to get back-
Okay.
Find the-
Would you like me to go ahead and read it?
Is it okay to make? Yes, please. Otherwise, I was gonna say, can I just make the motion off of what?
Well, and I think you probably could, but let me go ahead and read it on your behalf. It is the recommendation that Facilities Naming Committee-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations to rename WCMT 109 to JE Dunn Construction Management Lab, Nerman Mezzanine to Harrison Jadel Mezzanine, and Chiller Hill to Hahn Hill. And I make that on behalf of Trustee Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? You're welcome.
Second.
Okay, it was, it was moved and seconded, it was moved by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Hamel, I believe. Is that correct? Okay, is there any discussion regarding those, that recommendation? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you so much. And thank you to Facilities Naming Committee, that's a, that's a really great committee to serve on. So I'm grateful that you all had the opportunity to do that this year. Okay, and motion passes, six nothing, excuse me. Old business, I don't see any old business, so we will move right on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is found on, in the board packet on pages 29 through 50. If there is any item a trustee would like to pull at this time, you might let me know. And seeing none, is that correct? I'm not seeing any.
There are none here, Nancy. I'm sorry, I'm not doing my job for you.
No, 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 that's fine. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Musil, so move.
Second.
And that was?
Don.
Okay, thank you, trustee. The 10, okay, I've got both of those as well. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Okay, we do have an executive session this evening, so let me go ahead and read this. I would like to entertain a motion to- I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending personnel matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationships. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last 45 minutes. Now, I would ask for some assistance before I read the rest of this as far as timing, just to make sure what, what time you have there? And what time you would like to go into session. Mr. Musil, if you would help me with that.
It's 6:50 here. Do we want to start at 6:55 so everybody can have a break and then go into-
It might make a recommendation, maybe a little bit more than that if we have folks that need to transition via Zoom and so forth.
Oh.
Just in case our technology hitches.
Okay, okay.
Start at 7 o'clock Kansas time.
Okay. What if we seven, say 7:00 PM and ending at 7:45, at which time, open session will resume at this same location for those present in person and by Zoom video conference for the rest. Invited to join this executive session are all board members and attendants, Chair Lee Cross, Dr. Andy Bound, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Colleen Chandler, Kelsey Mazar, and Derek Teeter. And I will make that motion.
Second. Musil.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Musil. So we will begin at 7:00 PM and end at 7:45 when we will reconvene. Thank you all very much.
We need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We do.
You should have heard him here, they're just jumping all over me, Madam Chair.
Were they? I'm sorry, forgive me. Okay, motion was made by Nancy Ingram, seconded by Mr. Musil. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Perfect. We will move into executive session at 7:00 PM. Thank you so much, everyone.
We are back from executive session at 7:45 PM, and I'll turn it back to Chair Ingram.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Musil. We are back, there was no action taken, as he just mentioned, there being no further business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved and seconded, moved by Trustee Real and seconded by Trustee Richan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.